...openly states she is representing and quote, "meets regularly to discuss these types of things." Quote, "We're proposing," is Councilmember Carroll's exact quote from the committee. I'll repeat, "we're proposing." As clear representation of commercial interests, not the interest of this council. So the recusal vote involves several steps. Prepare a written statement. That written statement is required by law. That statement then goes to the mayor as the presiding officer. It's placed in the public record. It says to avoid take any further action. Avoiding any official action means not voting and not deliberating. The member is not required to leave the meeting, but as the Ethics Commission advises that members of public bodies who recuse themselves physically leave the room for the portion of the meeting concerning the conflict of interest to avoid any perception of undue influence. Ethics Commission sanctions, public record, a civil fine for each violation up to $2,000 in a cease and desist order. So should there be any confusion on this topic, I'd advise going into executive session for advice, and you can do that. You don't have to have an attorney. Section 13, 700 is not optional. All elected officials are required to abide by the law. And I would note, when I sat here on council, Councilmember Ryan Buchanan recused himself because he had one rental property. And left the room. And did the right thing. And any long-serving council member who doesn't complicitly get involved in this should know better. Thank you.
Mr. Duffey?
I'll get it up here now. Oh, boy. Brian Duffy, 3613 Waterway Boulevard. Good afternoon, council. Thank you, Randy, for that little overview of South Carolina ethics. Because, you know, I just want you guys to know, the good news is that my comments will be brief. The bad news is, I am compelled to be here. It's so sad that this is the second time this year that the unethical behavior of some on this council has reached my radar. It's sad because it is a violation of the position of trust you were given by this community. Fortunately, I am happy that there are still some on council who value and honor the position of trust. In fact, one council member gave us a lesson as to what to do when a perceived or real conflict of interest arises by getting a reading from the South Carolina Ethics Commission. Truly, it was a demonstration of valuing and honoring the trust given by the community. Like I said, I'm going to be brief. My question is, what is this family vacation rental group? I thought it was a new ad hoc group formed by this council. It just seemed like when I watched the administrative committee meeting last Tuesday, it sounded like this group had councils imprimatur. Sounds like the membership in this group is a conflict of interest for a council member. Thank you for listening. But as a reminder, when you lose trust, you have eliminated the only political capital you have. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Next item is special presentations, which we don't have any tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like to suspend the rule of order to entertain item 9E2 at this time? And I make that a form of motion?
Aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and item 9E2 is an update on Malcolm Burgess Plaza marker. Douglas, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update. This group designated the intersection of Ocean Boulevard and J.C. Loon Boulevard as Malcolm Burgess Plaza. The staff has been working on making that happen, and we are aware that there's a group of citizens that are collecting money to make that happen by way of a permanent, I think, kind of granite marble stop that would be placed right at the intersection, at the bulb of that intersection. We do believe that the, yeah, this on the screen is a visual of what, kind of a generic visual of what that might look like. We believe that it will take several months for that to be created, and because we believe that time is of the essence, we hope the staff is going to create a temporary marker and have that placed. And I think it, yeah, I think it's already been created. So we plan to place that in the next couple of weeks, and we'll let it be known that that has been placed, but it would be placed with a more permanent, more significant marker when it's made and when it's available, which is probably two to three months away. Once we have the permanent marker and it's in place, then we would plan a ribbon cutting and a ceremony to kind of formally designate the, and have an event to designate that intersection as the plaza. So that's all in the works. I just wanted you all to be aware that in the meantime, there will be a temporary marker just to get that done sooner rather than later. But it's not the permanent one. So I don't want anybody to think that if they made a donation, that their donation went to this. It didn't. This is just to have it marked in the short term.
Jimmy?
Kevin Popson has been taking the lead on collecting money, and as of this morning, the collection totaled $7,920. And he's been working with the, the goal was $7,500, and we're thinking with the excess, we're going, we would like to recommend to council that we use for landscaping improvements around the monument. There's a lot of people concerned about the temporary marker. And I don't know if I can suspend the rule of order and ask Kevin to make a comment about the timing of the permanent marker at this time? If I make that a form of motion?
Aye.
Second.
In favor? All right.
I had with the monument company yesterday, decided the contract, gave them the deposit, and so it is underway. Their initial time period was four months. I sort of twisted some arms trying to beat that, and I feel pretty confident we might get it done in 60 days. So we're going to push to get it done quicker as fast as we can. But if anybody has any questions, we've got it fully funded. We're not asking the city for anything, and it's all underway, ready to go.
It's all funded by private citizens and businesses, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Nothing to add? Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Douglas, you want to jump into the dashboard?
Yes.
And departmental reports?
Yes. Those two items are in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know. I would just point out that we do have, we have, much to my delight, we have hired a zoning administrator. That position will start next Tuesday. Happy to have that position on board. Unfortunately, our leading candidate for deputy administrator was slated to visit us from Texas last week, and they have accepted another position. So we'll continue to look for that position. We have two police officer vacancies, two firefighter vacancies, one paramedic vacancy. The rest of those, rest of those charts are trending, I think, fairly close to what we would expect. Currently, Congressman was just pointing out prior to the meeting that in years prior, commercial condos, which would have been the hotel rooms, those used to be licensed individually. So that 119 in the total dwelling units for commercial condos would have been in the year prior's number. They're not in there now. I think we've mentioned that in the past, but those are now issued one hotel business license. They're not each room individually licensed. So we will footnote that in the bottom left. We have a handful of asterisks. We'll add that one in there, that if you're looking to, if you're looking, if you're comparing charts from years prior, that 119 would have been in, and they're not in the current years going forward. Any questions about Amy?
So we're staying constant? No, we're?
Rough. Yeah, I think we're close.
A little bit higher this year than we were before, right?
I think we're 35.
35, yeah.
Yeah, 35 higher this year over last year.
Departmental reports are in your packet. Any questions? We've got department heads here if there are questions or comments. Douglas, anything there?
No.
Debra, you want to take us through the financial review, even though we're early in the fiscal year?
I sure will. As of August, you know, we're only two months in, but we have total revenue of $1.2 million. Of course, we've got a long ways to go to meet this $32 million. So we're only at about 4% right now. With the total expenses, we have spent about $3.3 million of the 30 million that has been budgeted. We're at 10% of the budget. The general fund, funds are coming in slowly because normally the first two months of the year, those revenues are allocated to the previous year because that's money that we're recognizing for that current, that period. The total revenue for the general fund is at $720,000. Of course, we have a budget of 16 million, so we're at about 4.37% of that. General expenses are at, I'm sorry, 2.3. 2.3 of the 17 million that we're anticipating spending, so that's about 13%, 13.68% of the budget, and the target is 17%. The city currently has $54 million of cash on hand. 51 million of that, 52 million of that is with our LGIP earning 4.4% interest, which is still, you know, higher than the normal bank will give us. We're keeping a little bit more in cash these days to avoid bank fees. We renegotiated our, I guess, agreement with the bank. So we are no longer getting bank fees, but we have to keep a higher balance in order to avoid getting bank fees.
Amy, can you go to the next page, please?
Thank you. As you will notice on the tourism schedules, once we cover those, the hospitality taxes are coming in a little bit slower than we anticipated, but we will address that when we get to that, those sheets. For our cash fund balances, fund balances, Amy, next page, please. Thank you. We updated our schedule, so we have what our current fund balances are as of today, and we updated the schedule with all of our capital projects that we anticipate for FY26, as well as some of the larger projects that's out in future years. And you can kind of see what we're, what we are projecting with the largest, everything is holding its own, except, of course, for beach preservation, which we've talked about, you know, this entire year. We, I did a little schedule, so you can kind of see it on the graph, since some council people like to see graphs. So this is, the next page is just a graph showing what the first page of the fund balances show. And then, of course, there's a little note about our projected beach preservation fund. This is our large-scale project in FY27. We're hoping to get some grant funding for that. We have reached out to one of the organizations that have given the city some beach preservation money before, and so we are hoping to take advantage of that process when those applications open back up. As far as our tourism schedules, we have been collecting more in muni ATAX as well as beach preservation. You know, those two are split evenly, and that's because we are now receiving the funds from the Airbnb, and we did not receive those in previous months. So those numbers are starting to look much better than they did, much, a little bit higher than they were. So year to, as of today, we're at 22% higher than we were last year this time on the municipal accommodations fee. We have not received any for state because it's a quarterly, but we're ending the year at 2.4, which is 7% higher than we were in FY24. For our county pass-through, those are quarterly as well, but we're ending FY25 at 22% higher than we did in '24. The hospitality tax, these are, I'm not really sure what's going on with this. Looked into what was received in August of last year, and the amount reported by business owners was, the gross income was double than what we got this month. I'm not sure how to measure that. I don't know if activity on island has really slowed down, and people are not coming to dine, but the hospitality taxes that are being reported are substantially lower than we received last year. And even for overall FY25, we're 2% lower than we were in FY24.
But Debra, do we know if somebody has not reported yet? I mean, that's a big question.
We looked at some of the larger businesses that normally report it, and they all have reported for July.
One thing that's interesting is I just happened to look at the traffic volumes for the summer, and August was way down from what June and July were. So there are fewer people coming over to the island.
That makes sense.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Because of our strong cash balance, the interest income for the first two months of the year was $380,000, is that correct?
$380,000, that is correct, for two months, yes.
It's 4.4 something percent.
Yes, 4.45.
Holding pretty steady.
It is. It actually ticked up a little bit?
Good.
From the previous month?
Yeah.
I was just wondering why on some of these, you compared FY25 to '24, but if you look back to '23, then it looks like '23 and '25 are running equivalent. I don't know what happened in '24 to make that different. Like the state accommodations tax.
Travel, cruises were back.
So it looks like we're back to '23 again, so we are, it wasn't just a blip. Last year was the?
Yeah, FY24, it looks like it, they were kind of decreasing across the board, as you mentioned, and now FY25, we're kind of leveling back off to '23's numbers. That is, yes.
Everything except the hospitality tax, which must be more dependent on local service, local locals.
Could be. As I stated, the beach preservation, that those numbers are higher than last year. We're at 22% of FY24. And our local option sales tax, we haven't received anything for FY26, but we're ending the year at 1.2, which is 2% higher than we were the previous year. Your projects, worksheets are all attached, so if you have any questions or knows, please let me know. But I want to move on to another spreadsheet that you received today, and I do apologize for the tardiness, but we just got the numbers and needed to get some confirmation, and that's regarding the property reassessment information. We have this slide. Okay. Okay, there we go. So on this spreadsheet, you know, every five years, the county does reassessment, and based on the numbers that were provided to us, the city millage rate will decrease from .0191 for operating millage to .0174. This will also decrease our debt service millage from .0032 to .0027. So that was a total millage of 22.1 in FY25 to .20.1 in FY26. Based on these numbers, our projected revenue will be 6.832 versus, to compare to our budget of 6.800. Now, of course, the object of the millage is to make sure that the city stays revenue neutral, and at seven, at the .0174 and the .0027, the city will stay revenue neutral. The, this is, if you look at the bottom of this sheet, it shows you the appraised value and how that has increased over the previous years. It's up 16% over the last year. And it's similar, if you look at the last five years, it was 16.75 in tax year 2020, fiscal year 2021.
We're to put that into English? So that everybody understands, even though your appraised value of your house has gone up because the millage rate is lower, you're probably going to pay roughly the same property taxes, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Yes. And we did put a little blurb on the website, on the city's website, about information on, you know, what is reassessment, and kind of a little summary of how it works. So you can see that on the website. The second page is, of course, the local option sales tax credit. We, based on the numbers, that is like an additional credit that we, the city gives back to the taxpayers, so that will be a credit. We budgeted $1.1 million. Last year, we received 1.2. So our rate will be .0019, when the previous year, it was .0020.
It's still 100% return.
Going back, yes, to the property owners.
30.
Okay. Oh. The only other thing I have is, I don't have the numbers in front of us because we have yet to do the audit, but the auditors will perform the field work on the week of October the 6th, so they will be onsite around October the 6th, and they will be here for our audit presentation in November, for the workshop in November, which is November the 11th. As it stands today, on audited numbers, the general fund should have an excess of $2.2 million. So what the staff is proposing, and this is, of course, nothing you have to vote on tonight, you vote in council, but of that $2.2 million in excess, we would recommend that 15% stays into the general fund. And that's kind of what we did last year. But this year, we're thinking that maybe 30% should go to the disaster recovery fund, and then 55% will go to the capital fund. So 15% of the general fund of that excess would be $331,000 staying in the general fund, 30% going to the disaster recovery fund, which is $663,000, and then the, I need to make sure that these numbers are right. And then 55% is $1.2 million going to the, going to the capital fund. Those are the percentages. We don't know what the numbers are going to end at, but they should be around 2.2. And then you'll be, you'll see the schedule to, so that you can vote properly.
Excuse me, what's the balance in the disaster recovery?
Three and a half.
It's like 3.3 right now, I think.
So that's a pretty significant increase. But we have to use those funds for something else. It's not set in stone, we can move it around.
But yes, the disaster recovery fund is not restricted only by what the city suggests.
Correct.
Debra, for September, we need to vote on the millage, but the split of the excess will be once the audit's done.
That is correct.
Probably in November.
That is correct. That's all I have, sir.
Other questions? John, you go? Debra, thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas?
I'm sorry. I do apologize, sir. Yes, we have a new staff member. Vedant Patel is here, and he is our new finance analyst. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to have you. You're welcome. Been here, what, two months, right? Six weeks?
One month.
Goes fast. Douglas, no procurement? Can you jump into capital projects update, please?
Yes, and I would just start by pointing out, there's, on the first project, we'll talk about the Waterway Boulevard multi-use path. In the funding source there, there's a typo on the cost of Phase 1 and 1A. That's actually 1.43 million, not 2.9 million. That's Phase 2 is 2.9. So total is 5.8, and then you have the breakdown of that 5.8 million. We are, I'm thrilled to tell you all that project is now well underway. Took a little bit of pushing to get there, but we've finally gotten it over the hump. We ultimately were able to get all 22 releases that were requested of us. We were able to get the Wild Dunes easement agreement in a place that everybody was satisfied with it. We have those, we have, those documents are with the Wild Dunes representatives being executed now. There's a little bit of back and forth between the surveyors and the attorneys in getting all that documentation executed, but that is underway. They've indicated that it should be done here in the next day or two. Truluck, all of that was kind of holding us from issuing and executing the contract with Truluck Construction. They were a great partner and kind of, and kind of held our place in line, and in fact, you know, on good faith, we're ordering materials, we're progressing the project even without a contract in place. But that contract has now been executed, so they jumped right to work. They have, they're out there today. They're reporting that the, they were happily, they've been happily surprised by how low the, they were counting on the water table being very high. Lot of dewatering, that's not happened. It's actually low, so it's a favorable condition for putting those pipes in the ground. So they are very optimistic that they will be very close to meeting the expectation on timing for the golf course, but I would also say that the Wild Dunes golf course managers have been tremendous and have acknowledged the kind of hurdles that we've had to overcome to get this thing going, and they've indicated a willingness to. It's still very important to them that our work is out of the playable part of the golf course, but we believe that parts of the golf course will have to be, the cart path will have to be rerouted to allow them to complete work, and the Wild Dunes group has indicated a full willingness to, and agreeable to those diversions for the time being. So everything is underway there and progressing nicely, finely.
Debra, so on Phase 3 of that, are we, are we starting to move forward? Are we looking at giving some RP or whatever we need to do on that so we can start?
On Phase 2. Yes, on Phase 2 we are.
On Phase 3, yeah, or Phase 2, actually, that's what.
Yeah.
The actual construction of the walkway.
That's correct. Yes, we, I don't, I don't, yes, we're progressing that. Part of the kind of Rubik's Cube was the easements being in place. That also has the grant tied to it, but we're separating that work out. That's taking a little bit of design work, but yes, that, that part- That's taking a little bit of, uh, design work, but yes, that, that part of the project is in our budget and it's, um, and we're time constrained to get that done, so we're progressing it as quickly as we can.
And FEMA has never, has not responded yet on extension of the grant?
They have not, and we'll report a little bit later in the agenda. Uh, we did have a, a very nice conversation with our federal lobbyists. They indicated, uh, that they felt comfortable that they could, um, work with us to get that extension granted, so they're working on our behalf with, with representatives of, from FEMA, uh, to get that extension in place. So, but we, we do not yet have anything. Um, we don't, it has not been extended yet, but we're, we're hopeful that it will be. Yes, so phase two will be right on the heels of this, again, with a, with a goal of having at least the nine hundred thousand that's associated with the federal grant, uh, spent by February, uh, to meet that, to meet that deadline.
Uh, and Doug, can I just, you know, a few, a few lines on this project update really does not, um, do justice to the complexity of all the moving parts and all the pieces. You know, just the twenty-two signed agreements took months of conversations, Douglas was at the lead of that, but, you know, with residents and family members and contractors and lawyers and you name it. Um, I mean, that just took a significant amount of work, coordination with Wild Dunes, on-the-ground golf course folks, again, through Douglas, and they've been great partners to, to, to make that happen. You know, watching, sitting here at City Hall and watching this project ebb and flow from happening to not happening to being successful, boy, it's, Douglas, this community owes you a huge thank you. I mean, that was a big project and it was a lot of moving parts and I see pipes going in the ground today, so thank you for that.
Good work.
What was it, seven years in planning and development to get to where we are now?
Yeah.
And we just started, we just broke ground.
It started as a simple path.
We paved the path.
Perseverance, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, phase four drainage, uh, project, this is Palm Boulevard between Thirty-Eighth and Forty-First Avenue. This is one that at your last month, you, you agreed to adjusting that design to take advantage of, um, the space being left by the Water and Sewer Commission, not extending sewer lines in that area, so that, those adjustments are in way. Uh, they're already in the review process, so we're not thinking that that would, um, that shouldn't change the timeline, uh, for that project. That is, uh, budgeted for this year and we're hope, we're hopeful to begin that, um, after, um, the beginning of the new year, twenty twenty-six. Um, the, I, the Marina Public Dock and Green Space, this is, uh, a project that you all agreed, um, to kind of initiate the lease agreements to make that, um, come to fruition. We have heard back from the restaurant tenants that before they would be willing to consider lease agreement, lease adjustments, uh, they would at least want a budget and funding plan for how those improvements would be made. Uh, you know, they, they seemed flexible in terms of what the surface, what the surface would be, uh, no, not dictating who would pay what, but at least kind of work out those details, uh, before they executed, uh, a lease agreement. So staff is going to, um, try to come up with a plan that would be agreeable to them and then there will be a funding component that the council will need to work through and the, and the, uh, along with those tenants to talk that through. Just for kind of, um, the benefit of discussion, uh, we have, we believe that the cheapest, what, the least expensive, um, solution that would be agreeable to everybody would be using the ground-up asphalt, the same material that we used in the employee lot and, and extending that surface over to the existing paving, uh, of the restaurant. So we don't think that that would be a terribly expensive, uh, proposition. We know it would, uh, meet, we think it would meet with the expectations of the Marina, I'm sorry, the, the restaurant tenants. So that's, that's kind of the, the path that we're going down now to get that, uh, to completion.
I was out there this past weekend and there are more potholes than level ground in that parking lot right now.
Yeah, the shared, the shared lot is the, is, is the real problem, child. And you'll see the employee lot that's to the left of that holds up well and it's, it's what makes the restaurant tenants a fan of that material.
Okay, so, but we'll re, we'll regrade the shared lot before we repay, before we do anything else.
That's correct. Yeah, and, and again, this is all subject to, I don't know what the, what the share and the expense would be. We don't, we don't know what the expense will be. I think to do the employee lot last time was twelve thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, so I don't think it'll be cost prohibitive, but I think there will be, definitely be an expense to it. And they would want us to, to work through that before they agree to lease amendments.
And are lease amendments underway or shortly will be?
Um, I could, I could, I could, I could launch that, um, in kind of good faith that we'll get through that, uh, process. I could, um, they're, they're not now. I, I put, I did not do that.
To get to the budget, to get to the final decision.
Yeah. Okay. Marina dredging, this is one where, uh, we have been waiting for, we, we got the state permit, we needed the federal permit. We have all those, uh, permits in hand now. The next kind of hurdle in that project is finding a suitable spoil site. The permit included, um, several spoil sites, but the most cost-effective one is one on Goat Island. There's kind of a back, a backside of that island that, that can be used for a spoil site, but there is, there are repairs that need to be made to hold the material and those repairs have not yet been made. So ATM is having discussions with the ownership group to see where they are with that, to see if they're going to be a viable option, uh, for that project. And that really needs to be buttoned up. Once that's buttoned up, one way or the other, either we're going to go to Goat Island or we'll go to a different site and pay more. That's the, the beauty of the Goat Island site is it's a, uh, it's less expensive, but we need to figure out where that spoils material is going to go. Once we have that figured out, then we will release the, uh, request for bid documents and get that project underway. Beach ma, uh, beach maintenance and restoration, um, last, well, I guess the twenty-sixth, this council approved, um, sandbags in the areas of Beachwood East Sandscape, uh, Seascape and, and Breach Inlet. Uh, that work began, I think it was Thursday of last week. Thursday of last week, they're progressing. They started at the Breach Inlet end. Um, they indicated that they were hopeful that they would be done with that end, um, by Thursday of this week. Spoke with Stephen today. He said that it, it appeared to him that they would, that they would go beyond that by a few days. So somewhere either the end of this week or the beginning of next week, uh, the, the Breach Inlet end would be done. They then would move, um, to the northern end and, uh, begin at Seascape and then go to Beachwood East. So that, that work is, is underway and they are hopeful to be completed by, uh, before the end of this month.
Okay, we received a comment from someone, I think at Ocean Club, about wondering whether they were going to get the sandbags or what was happening with them. Has anybody reached out to them to explain?
Uh, yes, so during the conversation at City Council, um, it was, it was brought to this council's attention that they had that building under construction. There was scaffolding kind of around and out onto the active beach. Um, I think Stephen recommended to you all that that made it a complex situation, uh, so this council did not authorize bags in front of Seascape. I mean, I'm sorry, in front of Ocean Club.
And did you convey that?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's probably why they're reaching out. I do know that I've, you know, I've, I've heard from individuals that they wish that you all would fund it, but, uh, the report back to them at, at this point, that decision has been to not fund that portion. So yes, that's been relayed to them.
Good, thank you.
Um, on our, on our dredging project with the Army Corps of Engineers, they have, uh, they are switching their method of, uh, removing the spoils material from the dredge sites. Uh, they are going to hit the halfway mark. Uh, they have indicated to us that all of their soils analysis have indicated that this last, uh, placement area has the highest quality sand, so this is, uh, we're hopeful that this sand will, will stay around a bit longer than the initial sand, which we knew did have some, um, some silt in it and, and subsequently did not stay on the beach as long as we would have liked. Uh, they're currently between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, so they'll be in that area for, of the three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, about half of it goes between Fifth and Sixth. The other half will go between Seventh and Ninth. Additionally, there is, after that three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards, there will be an additional, and they're approximating it at two hundred and sixty thousand cubic yards, through a different contractor, uh, moving, uh, the sand that has shoaled in, um, at the intercoastal waterway where it meets Breach Inlet. So that, that work will also be happening on that end of the island. Um, they are indicated, that's, that's out to bid now. They're getting bids back, uh, I believe it's next week, but they anticipate that work uh, beginning just before the, just before the, uh, new year, but they wouldn't be on the Isle of Palms until early, uh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, beach monitoring survey that we're doing that twice a year, um, CSC has been, was out here last week doing that. It usually takes them several weeks to compile just the data, uh, and then typically a month or two before they actually generate a report, uh, back to the, back to the city, so that will be underway. And then the, um, the large, the, the large offshore renourishment project, um, Stephen and I were discussing this this morning, uh, he still is pulling together the notifications to give adjacent property owners notice as required by the permit. Uh, it has not been submitted yet, but I think it's, I think it's, um, a matter of days before that's completely wrapped up and, and ready to be submitted. Um, underground power lines, I have, I, I have no updates to give there and the, um, I must have skipped a page. Cause I know the.
Yeah, I'll still see where you are.
Twenty-first Avenue, there's somewhere there's a, there's a page that's missing.
We didn't get it?
Yeah, the, the, um, the project at Twenty-first Avenue is being wrapped up, um, and, and Robert was out there today, uh, finalizing that project, so I think that that was, that should have been in your update. I think, uh, I think a page got dropped off. I can't think of what was around that, but that project will come off from the reports going forward because it's, it's done and completed. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'd just like to make one comment on that project, as I did earlier today. The sidewalk that the county built or replaced, it still floods the way it did before. And, um, engineering projects, even a sidewalk, you don't just lay concrete, you actually, if you're trying to improve the situation, you make sure you do it right and it still floods as badly as it did before. So, I'm looking a gift horse in the house and the face, in the mouth, but you know, it's unfortunate.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Next item, strategic plan, policy initiatives and priorities, livability. First item is discussion of golf cart path designations. I think this is coming out of the new, uh, state legislation, uh, around golf cart and paths. John or Douglas?
Well, you're right. It was a new golf cart legislation.
Pass that, that allowed for municipalities to designate golf paths. Um, so this, this was at the Public Safety Committee and we are recommending that that area around Palm Boulevard, the curve, be designated as a golf cart path, as well as the one across the street, I think that'll run in front of Carmen, uh, Bunch Park.
Douglas, something the city has to do anything or the police chief, is that just for y'all's purpose to know that or?
So that, so this will be done.
Anything we need to do?
Yeah, so, uh, this was an ordinance given first reading last month and will be given second reading, but other, other than just, uh, codifying it, there would be nothing else, uh, for the city to do.
And are we planning on doing any improvements to that?
No, no, this is purely to make them legal golf cart paths, as recognized by the state. They're, they're there, they've been there for years, that, there's no plan, that, this is just to tidy up the legal issue of not being designated.
I'd call it a future golf park cart path if I were you.
Next item is, uh, discussion of shark fishing ordinance and guidelines. John also had a public safety.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you want to, but this thing is kind of called in full circle with the Public Safety Committee, I think like three meetings, but it started out, I think, as a concern around, uh, what we took as a concern around commercial shark fishing on the, on the beach. Um, since that point, that has been stopped, I think. It's, we got to the bottom of who it was and it was stopped, but we expanded it into, uh, fishing in general, recreational fishing on the beach. And we put in place, uh, the first time around, split some precautions that we thought would both take care of commercial fishing on the beach, but also potentially chumming and those types of, uh, of, of actions that would potentially attract, uh, shark. Um, since that time, um, we have been, uh, and Douglas, and I'll let you comment, but you, you've had conversations with the DNR and MAC and I think the feeling is we're, we don't have the authority to do what we said we wanted to do and we're setting ourselves up for what is becoming, I think, a pretty, um, uh, around the state, a situation where commercial fishermen are, are, not commercial, recreational fishermen are being concerned and starting to get really active around this as municipalities try to ban, ban this. But I think the one thing that we did do in this, this potential ordinance here is we kept in here, and I think this is still, according to MAC, is a area of potential concern and the DNR, where it's unlawful for, um, to fly fishing line out by drones out into the ocean, drop them and then, you know, fish return. I think that's more in line with what we consider commercial type fishing. And so we left that in here and it's a ban. He, but the DNR and I think MAC both feel like potentially that's a problem, but to me, it's, I, I think it's worth it to, to chance that. But the other real benefit, I think, is what's in here, is it left, it allows for police officers, beach service officer, code enforcement officers, if they feel they, a fisherman is endangering, uh, swimmers or, or endangering the beach in any way, they can ask that fisherman to stop and move. And I think it gives them some discretion around, you know, monitoring unsafe conditions on the beach, which I think is really important in, in a crowded beach and you have fishermen and, and beach goers and surfers all trying to, uh, to take up the same area. So I think that's a benefit of the ordinance and I, you know, I'd like to see us move forward with that piece of it at least, but Douglas, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I would just add to that, um, to John's point, that the section about the police officer being able to make a judgment on what's safe and not, um, the DNR supported that, they had no issue with that, they felt like that was a good, um, that was a good change and a good add. Um, or casting equipment, that the state code gives them that authority. So in our, in our old code, in our old, uh, I'm sorry, proposed amendments, we had language in there about chumming. Uh, they said you just can't, you can't regulate that, that's bait. We just kind of made the, we made the case back to them, what if we generically said you can't chop up, you know, animal parts and put them in the water generically and we didn't call it chumming, we didn't say it was bait. They, they kind of agreed that could be a potential gray area. If we, if we wanted to get into that, we probably could do, we could probably do something creative like that. And they indicated the same thing about drones. They said, you know, if, if you really wanted to go after that, the, the proper, from their perspective, the proper approach would be to ban all drones on the beach, um, with the exception, and they, they made mention of some communities that, that have done that. That doesn't cause them any problems. If we just say blanketly, you can't fly drones unless it's a, you know, it's a city, because we use them to monitor the beach, we, we use them, uh, we've talked about using them a lot more for rescue, um, so you could have a, you could. rescue, so you could have, you could have kind of a method in there to say, other than official, official work, they're banned, but, but as it's written now, it's banned for casting only, which may be on a little shaky ground, chumming is out of there now, so I think if this group thought that chumming was enough of a problem to put back in, we could do that, but we would make it a generic language about, you just can't dump any animal parts in the water, for any, any purposes. There are a lot of back and forth on this one.
Chief, you want to add anything?
And then Blair.
All I would add is that we're not crazy about gray area in the police department, so if we could avoid that, that'd be fantastic. Other than that, this seems kind of full circle, when this first came around, we spoke with DNR, and they were kind of like, eh, some places do it, and so that was the guidance we got, but as it turned out, several municipalities were looking at something similar, and then DNR said, well, hold on. So, but we've been in conversation with them, and if, I don't have any issues with anything that's in here, but I would say that if the drones are not a big deal, and that's something that's on shaky ground, I don't see it as something that's crucial for us either. At that point, I'd rather not be on shaky ground, if that's kind of the guidance we got, but other than that, we're good, certainly good with B.
Blair, you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a lot of different issues, I mean, as the chief points out, it's very difficult to enforce, because we've got a code enforcement officer that in that officer's judgment decides that there's a public safety concern, these will say, can't fish here, I mean, that's just judgment on top of judgment compounded, which is a problem. I mean, I also think that that language creates liability for the city, because if that is in fact happening, and they're dragging a shark through the, through the surf, and the city hasn't taken the steps to say, stop, well now, we have violated our own ordinance, and therefore it would be liable for shark bite. I, you know, if it was me, and I guess I'm just one vote, I would move forward with something that has more teeth, and if somebody wants to challenge it, let them challenge it, and we'll see where the, where things land. As to the drone, that only addresses a part of the issue, with, when the shark fishing, they're taking 10 to 20 pound hunks of beef with J hooks in them, and paddling them 200 yards offshore and dropping them, and they're connected to a line, so they are baiting very large animals and bringing them through the surf. Now, maybe that's, the issue is, it's not our jurisdiction out there, it is our jurisdiction on the shore, though, and we saw after the last time we talked about this, a 12-foot hammerhead shark was caught on Sullivan's Island, well, that would eat a small trout, one bite. So, you know, to me, it is a serious enough situation that it's worth the risk for us to do something that may be challenged, and let it be challenged. People challenge stuff all the time, okay, let's rock on. I mean, we have a, we have an obligation to make sure the beach is safe for everybody on the beach.
I do think the challenge, I do think there are at least, there's at least one, if not two, current challenges that are ongoing, so I do think we'll have a, you know, we'll have a decree from the courts as to whether or not communities have this authority or not, in the relatively, you know, near future.
That'd take a couple of years, the time that's
Maybe a few, maybe a few years.
You know, why not put it in place, and, you know, if they challenge it, they challenge it, or if, at the end of the day, the Supreme Court says, yeah, you can't do that, well then we take it back.
I guess, what would you be suggesting that we do put in place, though? I mean, there's a concern over saying that there's no recreational fishing, I think that would generate a lot of heat really quick on the beach.
The Ori County ordinance is very simple, it's very short, and it addresses shark fishing. I like that very much, because it very specifically says, you got a shark on the line, and you know there's a shark on the line, you cut the line, you're not bringing sharks through the surf.
Yeah.
Period. And there are just so many holes in this, that we're going, we're not going to stop anything.
But that's not the way I read that Ori County one, it said there's no shark fishing allowed, and if you can't bring one in, in other words, if you bring it in, you got to release it, but the question that we got into in the committee level is, you know, you fish for shark in general, the same way you fish for a lot of different fish, and how is a police officer going to enforce, I mean, then you get into a situation where you're banning recreational fishing, which at least our committee, I think, was not in favor of doing.
If you're, if you're fishing for small shark, okay, just like any other fish, that's not what these people are doing. They are fishing for thousand pound animals, specifically, and it has happened in South Carolina before, the world record for shark caught from shore is in South Carolina, three times, and they're doing exactly what these people are doing, they're taking J hooks bigger than your arm, and putting them through a 10 to 20 pound hunk of beef, and putting it out there, waiting for a big animal on the ground.
Yeah, I think that's what we attempted to do with this, but that's what we attempted to do with this drone thing, because what they're doing is flying out.
And then a drone ain't going to pick up something that big, they're putting it on a kayak and paddling it 200 yards offshore and dropping it, it's attached.
But aren't they taking them, they're baiting it out there, but then they're taking drones and flying, my understanding was they're taking drones and flying them.
Two different things, one is by kayak, one is by drone.
Yeah, but the kayak, I mean, the drones can't pick up these big, these big hunks of meat and do this, and they're specifically looking for very large animals, and for me, I would try to stop it regardless, and let, make the Supreme Court tell us no, make the Supreme Court say that it's okay to bring hungry thousand pound animals to shore.
I think that the committee would agree, I'd like to hear from the committee too, but I think when we had our discussion, we agreed that we would, you know, that kind of fishing is kind of outside of what we'd like to see on the beach, but we heard from, actually, a recreational fisherman came in from somewhere and spoke to us about it, and there was a lot of discussion around this, you know, around banning recreational fishing in general, and how any kind of things to attempt to stop shark fishing would be unenforceable and could potentially lead into banning recreational fishing, and I don't think, at least any of us, we're in favor of banning recreational fishing, so the distinction has to be hot, what, what language would you put in to stop what you want, but to keep what people enjoy doing, I mean, they, people have a right to fish on the beach just as much they do to swim on the beach.
Yeah, so you go back to the Ori County ordinance, and it's banning shark fishing, and, and yeah, there's a judgment call there, we already got judgment issues, that's what we got here, but, but it's very clear when you're, when you're doing this heavy equipment fishing from shore, that you're not looking to hook a recreational fish, you are looking to hook a big animal.
I don't, I don't know much about fishing, so I really don't have much of an opinion on how to do this, but I'm just wondering, don't you use a different sized rod and reel when you're fishing for thousand pound animals than mom and pop, standing on the beach?
I don't know, you, you know.
They're using hooks, they're literally the size of them all.
Okay, and how do they pull it in? I mean, is it mom and pop's little rod that they're using?
Oh, no, they've got huge tackle, and they strap it to their body, and they crank it.
Can we just ban that?
Well.
If you can't reel it in, why you got to fish for it?
That's basically what Ori County ordinance does.
So you're not going after the fish, you're going after the, what do you call it, block and tackle?
Well, I mean, I still think you need to go after the fish, but nobody's going to bring that type of equipment to the shore if they're not looking for very large animals, because A, it's very expensive, it's very heavy, it's cumbersome, there's a specific use for it.
So that's another way around it, is just ban the block, a block and tackle larger than a certain size from the beach?
That is something that the DNR said very strongly, that we're not allowed to do.
Okay, that's what I, just to ask.
I do Ori County, you know.
Well, we started with the Ori County ordinance in the Safety Committee meeting, that's really where we started with that, right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Is kind of the landmark legislation that we saw out there, and I think Hilton Head had some things in place, and, and we had, you know, John's point, we had some recreational fishers who actually do this, but they also explained how they do their recreational fishing in an area away from people, they only did it at certain times of the year, not during the busy summer season, stayed away from swimmers, and all, that's great, but then we had, what's it, Georgetown County that has the big controversy up there, where they were trying to ban all shark fishing, I think, and they had a number of commercial shark fishers up there, and so that's when the state really stepped in, and we're kind of like, and, you know, Blair, like, we could roll, we could roll the dice and do what we want to do, but I think where I got to, the committee, as we talked it through, said, really, the rational thing to do is to go ahead and make sure that we, probably our biggest challenge was the aerial vehicles or drones, you know, leave that in there, and then give the discretion to our police department to make the call on whether there's a safety issue or not, related to swimmers or surfers or kayakers, or, you know, folks like that that are in the surf, so I feel comfortable with what we've got here right now, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, commercial fishing, we really only, we didn't cite anybody, but we did have one or two incidences where we did see or apprehend commercial fishers.
The initial complaints
Shark fishers.
The initial complaints were dealing with commercial fishing, shark fishing on the beach, and when we got out there, we were unable to, the people we made contact with were saying they were with family, they weren't commercial fishing, it was difficult to make that charge, but it is already illegal for commercial activity on the beach.
That's where I was going with it, we, it's already in our code, basically, that we don't allow commercial fishing on the beach.
Yes, sir.
And case in point with that, this summer, there were shark fishermen out there, and the police went and talked to them, and they said, oh no, this isn't commercial, we're not doing anything, that's my girlfriend, and that's her daddy, and that's my uncle Bud over there, and that's my cousin Henry coming, and I know that's not true, because I went down there and talked to them.
Yeah.
And they're telling me, yeah, you should hire these guys, they'll catch a big shark for you. So, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, to me, I would push forward with as much teeth as possible, and let the courts tell us we're wrong.
Why don't we wait and see what the Ori County ordinance, whether it survives a legal challenge?
We, that's two years from now.
Well?
Minimum.
Okay.
And then it's going to be appealed, potentially.
And I have one more comment, I think we're about done, and this is a little, little catty, section seven dash three dash 23, I think our spell check has a little problem with aerial surveillance as well, and they have it as A R I A L, because they've never heard of the other kind. We are banning certain script in the air, you know.
Isn't that the name of the mermaid?
Mermaid, yes.
Yeah, well, she's, she's that way, too.
Douglas, this is, Mac's been involved in?
Yes.
Losing track of where we are, have we already done first reading on this, or not?
No.
We have not.
I think it was
We sent it back to committee.
That's correct.
So the plan is
It's been in committee two, three times, three, four months.
The plan is to come back to council for first reading this, end of this month.
Yep, yep.
You, chief, you have other comments on all this, or?
No, no, sir.
It seems like we just take it down the process and
Yeah, I think so.
Vote it up or down one way or the other. I mean, Blair, what if you added language, or John's chair, on, you to the drone section? And y'all have had the DNR conversations, I don't know what their comment would be, but if you added to subsection A, something around the kayaking and taking bait out that way, is that?
So I, I think that gets to the, I mean, and of course, chief tells us he doesn't like gray area, but, but we talked about
Pretty gray.
About just banning dumping chunks of meat in the water, don't call it chumming, don't call it bait, don't define it as chumming, but just blanketly make it illegal to dump chunks of meat in the water.
The process is to take a kayak and take big chunks of meat, as Blair says, out to the ocean, far, fairly far out, they drop the bait, then they take the drones, because the only way to get the fishing line out to the shore is to drop it.
No, they, they put the hook in the meat with a fishing line attached to it, guy stays on shore and cranks the line out as he paddles it out there and drops it.
I think that's the big, I think that's the big
Yeah, because a drone can't pick up
Drone is slightly different.
The size hooks and lines they're using, drone couldn't pick up. Now, another option might be, and I'm spitballing at this, at this stage, is language that says you can only cast for fish from shore, and you're limited by how far you can cast the line out there, there's no casting aids, whether it's by boat, or by drone, or by anything else.
That way you're kind of covering it all.
Yeah, that, that way, you're stopping it at, you know, what, 30 yards, whatever age you throw a cast.
I think you can modify that language to say something to that effect, or it should be unlawful to use unmanned aerial vehicles or drones for fishing lines, or, you can also add in there any kind of boat or kayak to take lines out, and I think you can satisfy what you're talking about to stop that, and I think we, you know, I'm okay with adding something like that in there personally, but.
Let's go back to, can I suggest we take it back to committee?
If we're just making that one change, I'd bring first reading back, Douglas, we can get Matt to add some language.
With that, with that one little change in there, and I think that addresses what we're talking about here.
Yeah, play with the language, maybe, maybe, it's what, however far you can cast, and I don't know the language to say that.
No, I agree, clean the language up.
But any, any kind of aided.
Yeah, no, no mechanical aid in casting.
John.
Come on, Coast Guard.
I'm okay with that.
Douglas, you, Senator Hader?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we bring it, bring it back into the
That's the official term.
Bring it back into the month of our first reading. Yep, you're good with that. Yeah, I think, changing to your point, if it has to get back to committee at some point with some tweaks, we can do that, but can at least push it to the next, next, next line. Next item, A3, discussion of license strikes being citations instead of founded complaints, this conversation earlier came up through the admin committee for some reason, if there's going to be any conversation around this topic, I think it needs to be in public safety, let chief opine on, on any changes that need to be made there, so I would, I would suggest we don't even have a conversation on this, but we send it back to public safety, which is where it should have been to begin with. Douglas, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Well, there's, in the past, there's been kind of a wide variance about what committees could talk about, to give council members a voice in what's going on, except in their one little committee, if they only serve on one, and most of us only serve on one, so it's finally going back to public safety, but it needs more discussion by everyone.
Yeah, but safety committee can, that, whatever needs to happen.
I think, I think it is defined in the ordinance that we put out, what each committee's kind of responsibilities are, I'm not sure this falls within the admins.
And we, well, it'll come back to the workshop for all to comment, all right, just as this fishing ordinance is.
Again.
Should we take it back?
I suspect whatever route we followed it, we didn't go in the Safety Committee anyway.
So y'all just met today, right? So we'll have it on the October, October session.
I mean, even if it's brought up in another committee.
Well, it has to do with ordinances.
Next item is environmental discussion of citywide glyphosate ban, Douglas, I'll say that.
Yeah, and really, that should say city property.
City property, not citywide, thank you.
It's not a city.
It's a question, because the ordinance reads just on city property.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
It does say city property on that.
Yes, this is coming from the Environmental Advisory Committee, and they, they started, this process started with a resident coming to that committee and expressing concern about the use of glyphosate, which is the, which is the generic term for Roundup, and there have been studies indicating that Roundup is a cancer-causing agent, that the, I will say, the Environmental Advisory Committee went around and around on what the proper kind of first step would be on this, on this, on this topic, and part of their deliberation And part of their deliberations, they reached out, you know, and kind of the spectrum of things that they could do, they, they talked about a citywide ban, that you couldn't use it anywhere, then that kind of got diluted down a little bit to what about commercial operations not using it. That led to members meeting with the golf course maintenance staff with Wild Dunes. And I will side, which would be potentially more, have more negative implications. So the Environmental Advisory Committee ultimately had a discussion with Robert and his staff about taking, making the first step be to just not use it on city-owned properties. They, they talked through this with Robert. Robert didn't see any issue with doing it that way, approaching it that way. He had conversations with the city's landscapers, they didn't indicate a problem. We don't use a tremendous amount of it anyway, we use it on rocks, you know, in places that have parking lots, weeds come up through it, they were using it on those, on those weeds. The alternative, I think, is a very strong vinegar. It's not as effective, but it does kill the weeds, it doesn't get down to the roots, though. So this first, this draft has it banning it for use on city-owned property. I think that we would do this with a, with a kind of publicity push to notify, to let people know about the concerns about the, about the chemical, more of a kind of campaign, an educational campaign, but would also stop using it on city property.
Douglas.
Yes.
You should have been a diplomat. You choose your words very carefully and wisely.
He is, yeah.
He said, the Wild Dunes people had a strong reaction.
They did.
It was very good, Douglas.
We can imagine all sorts of things that happened.
They're, they're very passionate about their use of glyphosate, kind of surprising, but.
Is this going to compromise anything, I shouldn't even say this, but is it going to compromise anything that we're doing in conjunction with Wild Dunes near the golf course and the?
No, no, so this would only have an impact on city-owned property, so.
And all of that other is just right of way anyway, right?
Yes, yeah. It's, you know, this is only our parking lots, city hall, rec center, public safety building.
Parks.
Yeah, parks. So not our rights of way.
It's not our, yeah, I guess we have a little bit of right of way, but most of it's state.
Yes, any, any rights of way that we manage and oversee. So it is, it is a fairly diluted prohibition, but I think the Environmental Advisory Committee feels like we could do this, or they could do this with some publicity and just bring some awareness to the concerns about the chemical.
And what is the problem with the chemical?
That it, that potentially it is cancer-causing, that, that if you, if you use it, and, and there, I guess my eyes have been opened to the EPA finds it to be generally safe if used correctly, and it is the World Health Organization that, that finds it to be very unsafe. So Europe, I mean, in Europe, it's, it is banned, and parts, other parts of the world, it's banned, but the EPA is, has not found it to be as dangerous as the World Health Organization. So there's definitely a split, you know, back to the Wild Dunes narrative, they did not fall more in line with what the EPA finds, that it's not terribly dangerous.
There's a lot of litigation over it in the United States, successful litigation, because the damages are typically cancer, all kinds of cancers. But it's for long-term exposure to it. And it has a very long half-life, so you spray it on the ground, it doesn't go away, it just stays. And so that, those, those are some of the concerns. And the vinegar works, that's, we use vinegar at my house, you go out in the yard and you get hungry.
That's the shark fishing happening at your house.
We're going down quickly.
Thank you, Douglas. Next is discussion of proposed light, you know, this is also coming from the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Yep, and Todd, if you don't mind, if you'd come up and sit here. This is Todd Murphy with the Environmental Advisory Committee. He has really been kind of the point person on this project, so I'm going to let him just run through the Environmental Advisory Committee's process and where they wound up with this, with this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, in your packet, there's five or six pages of information that I'm sure you've memorized, but I thought I would do a quick, just kind of an overview of where we are, what we're talking about. But this is around protecting Alapalms from some of the negative effects of light pollution. Light pollution is a product of, it's really a combination of development, which, you know, growth, development is certainly going on in the island. And in the last decade or so, the introduction of LED lights is like the new standard. There's really not, you know, the LED lights that you sell off the shelf at Lowe's, Home Depot, your favorite store, tend to be very bright, very high-intense lights with that very blue light or very bright white kind of hue or color to them. So the combination of a lot of development with this new standard of lights is really kind of stepped on the gas, if you will, of the amount of light that's being produced in growing communities. And so, you know, we have some ordinance in place protects the beachfront, and it's specific to sea turtles, we're all very familiar with the ordinance, it's been on the books for a long time. But excessive lighting also affects other forms of wildlife, so other animals, it affects mating cycles, nesting cycles, it affects pollinators, which negatively affects plants, and so it has kind of a ripple effect. And so those are other things that are important for us to think about. And then also, human beings, that's the other thing that we don't, certainly don't protect human beings with the ordinance that we have today. A lot of medical research that shows too much light, you guys, you know this, if you sleep in an area that's too well-lit, you don't sleep well, you wake up, you're, you're not rested, you're grumpy, so that's a, that's a bad thing. But more importantly, you don't produce melatonin, you don't sleep well, you don't, you're not fighting off disease. And so it's actually linked, over excessive lighting, is linked to diseases and cancers, in particular breast cancers is a big one. And then the last thing is, you know, there's too much light, it kind of impacts the natural beauty of the area. So if you're in downtown Atlanta, Charlotte, Columbus, Ohio, you look up, you don't see the stars because there's so much light around you, you come to Alapalms and you can see the meteor showers. So there's a element about protecting the sky, just purely from a natural beauty perspective. So there's a chart on page sixty-four, which is pretty impactful, and talks about how we're doing here at Alapalms regarding light pollution. This chart, there's a, there's NASA data that's available on the internet, it's, there's a term, it's an acronym, V I I R S, it's in the packet, explains what that is. But basically, it's a measure of light radiance, how much light is being put out, it's viewed from satellites in the sky, how much light is being put out by an area, and that data is available over time. And so you, we've learned a couple of things by looking at the data. Number one is that Alapalms, our light footprint has gone up four percent on average per year since two thousand and thirteen, when this data was first available. And so if you do the math on that, that's roughly a fifty percent growth over that time in the amount of light that we emit as an island. The second thing is, we looked at the other communities near us, we looked down at Sullivan, Folly, Kiowa, and Edisto, and kind of compared, and that's what this chart represents, how the, what the level of lighting mittens each of these islands has today. And we were surprised to learn that not only was Alapalms at the top of the list, meaning we put out the most light, but that Folly Beach was at the bottom of the list. And so that was intriguing, we were not expecting that. So we did some research with, first we start with ordinances, we looked at all the city ordinances, and as I mentioned, Alapalms has a sea turtle-specific, beachfront-only ordinance today, but we looked at what the other, other communities had for ordinances. And there's a range, and that's on page sixty-five, I think, in your chart, there's sort of a spectrum. All five of the communities have turtle protection, beachfront protection, like Alapalms has. But then when you get into Kiowa and Edisto, they go around the island and protect all the natural areas, so the river, the marsh, you know, anything that's considered a natural area, they protect. But what Folly Beach did, which is, they were the overachievers, they put in specific ordinances on the residential properties across the islands, and not just by the natural areas, any residential property with exterior lighting, they've got some very specific and very technical ordinance requirements. And so it was a lot. When we looked at the Folly ordinance, we thought that's, that's a pretty big jump from where we are today, we thought we would speak to Folly. Matt Sims was, was on the phone with me, he used to be our employee at the, at the city here, is now at Town in Mount Pleasant. Matt and I talked to the folks at the city of Folly Beach, they surprised us. Couple of things they surprised us. First of all, the ordinance was very heavy, so we thought that management was going to be very heavy as well, and it wasn't. And what they've done, to make it very simple, is they put in their building permit process, language around what the requirements are, so they can educate the homeowners and the builders on what we expect from an exterior lighting perspective. And then on the inbound, on the permit application process, there's a list of questions about, you know, what are you going to do, how much light is it, where is it going to be positioned and aimed, and so they can, they can ensure that compliance is, is understood through the permit process. And so that really is the primary, that's, that's their, that's the steps they took. And so he said, okay, well, what about the homes that were built before the ordinance was on the books? And this, they've had their ordinance on the books for, I can't remember now, I want to say ten or fifteen years, it's a, it's a pretty, they were early, early into the process. But they really weren't spending a lot of time on the houses that were already existing, they were waiting for phone calls to come in and say, hey, this house is, you know, extremely lit up, don't we have an ordinance? And they would go look and say, okay, yeah, we need you guys to get into compliance. And so even though they had not done a recent project, they did require people to come into compliance, as opposed to sort of grandfathering them in, which they said would have been a nightmare to try to administer. So, so yes, is it, you know, is that a big lift? And they said, again, they said, no, and then over time, of course, through the permitting process, you touch more and more homes, and so eventually, you're, you're sort of eliminating the problem because everybody's in compliance through projects at some point. So, so that's kind of the, the history of how we got to where we landed, was we said, okay, we really don't want to try to boil the ocean, and what if we just tackle residential properties? What if we took a subset of the things that Folly and Kiowa and Edisto and others are doing and made those proposed changes to our existing lighting ordinances? And did something that would be a light lift for homeowners, easy to manage for the city and staff, and would still have an impact, okay? And so that's where we landed. We've basically got four elements here, and I'll summarize them in my own words, but if you live on the marsh, intercoastal waterway, or other natural areas, you'll shield the lights and shine the light down, just like we ask people on the beachfront to do today. So it's the same request, it's just for the rest of the natural areas. That's number one.
So the rest of the natural areas being, basically the?
Intercoastal waterways, marsh, marsh areas, and really just, it's other natural areas in Southwood.
Okay, so the boundaries of the island, basically.
Interior and exterior, yes. Because it could be interior creeks, forests, anything that's not a residential or a commercial property.
Not, not on this island, though.
Lagoons, creeks, yeah.
I mean, you've got marsh everywhere, yeah.
Marsh, yeah. Interior and exterior. Morgan's Creek, lagoons inside Wild Dunes.
Yeah, inside Wild Dunes, but their, their lighting is already pretty strictly regulated, I think.
We didn't see anything, I can come back to that, but we didn't see anything from Wild Dunes. I asked them specifically, they said we rely on the city, on their ordinances.
Okay.
Second thing was, you will not shine light directly into adjacent homes or properties, kind of keep your light to yourself, and don't shine into the windows or your neighbors, that sort of thing. The third one is for architectural or landscape lighting that shines upward, that's fine, just use low wattage lighting, have it on a timer so it turns off by ten P M. And then the fourth element was that there's a, there's a temperature rating called Kelvin, you know, I'm not a lighting expert, but Kelvin represents sort of the, the tone of the light or the temperature. We're recommending three thousand Kelvin, there's actually a chart on page sixty-six that kind of explains the Kelvin scale, but this represents sort of that amber light. And Dominion Energy has a light that they put in at request, they call turtle-friendly, and it's in that same scale, that sort of amber color, I think it was actually under three thousand Kelvin, but that's something they consider to be a turtle-friendly light. So we're recommending that outside light be no, no brighter than the three thousand Kelvin as well. So that's the four sort of components of the ordinance, and the, the actual red lines are in the packet.
So basically, you're not requiring us to remove lights, you're just saying, use these approved light, lighting fixture bulbs or whatever?
Right, so the retroactive change was a couple of options, several options. One is the positioning of the light, so sometimes spotlights by default go out.
Yeah.
You can turn them down, right, that's one solution. If it's a light that doesn't, it's not move, doesn't move, or it actually has a broader type of a bulb, you can attach a shield to those lights. And a lot of those lights come configured to be able to put two screws in and attach a shield, so you're basically, there's, there's actually a picture in the packet, too, but it's sort of taking away the indirect light that goes that direction and kind of keeping light going down into your yard and towards the house. And then the third, of course, is if you're replacing lights, is, you know, replace with the proper lights.
But I could, I could replace bulbs, in other words, if I uplighting at trees or something like that, you just replace the bulb.
Right, right.
And the light still is intact.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So the Environmental Advisory Committee were asking the city to modify our existing ordinance to add these additional elements to that, and then let us institute new permitting process to enforce this and manage the process going forward.
And how are we going to enforce it?
So Folly Beach's recommendations, what we're suggesting is that we use the permitting process as the primary vehicle.
Okay.
And then if there's reported outliers, that that would be handled through the, I think it's zoning department initially, and then if there's not compliance, then police department would step in to enforce compliance, but.
I'd like to hear from the chief about that. Is that okay?
Like, he's third in line, but, yeah.
Yeah, he can just shoot them out.
Yeah.
So police departments kind of look at lights a little different. We like light.
Yeah.
Now, there are studies that can go both ways, as far as whether lights reduce crime or not, but my, my training has always been that lights help reduce crime, because people are less likely to commit criminal acts when they are visible. But now we have all these masks, so maybe it's not as big as it used to be. As far as enforcing it, it's, we would enforce it the same way we do now with anything that zoning comes to us. They will bring something that they say is a zoning violation, we can issue a citation for it, and we would just bring that zoning officer with us to court, and they would, they would testify what the violation was and what steps they took before we had to get involved. That, that part's not an issue at all, it's, we've done it before, we can, I've done it in previous departments, it's, it's easy to do.
Okay. I'm seeing that there could be a lot of, we've, we've got a lot of law-abiding citizens in our community, and I could see us passing something like that and everybody going crazy trying to figure out what in the world they got to do with the lighting on, the external lighting on their homes right now to stay, you know, law-abiding. And I see this as, it may cause more angst than we really care to deal with at the moment, I don't know. Is there a way that we can get, get around that?
Rather just point it to zoning as well, I would like to.
They show up next Tuesday, so.
Here's your first task, Rusty.
Yeah, thank you. Did Folly, Todd, did Folly Beach do this just gradually? I mean, they put this in place to permitting process years ago and have just gradually gotten to the point that they have this low radiance?
They did the ordinance, as I said, I remember it being at least ten years ago, because I remember thinking that was around the time the LED lights came in, so they were actually ahead of the curve.
Hmm.
So they got ahead of it a little bit, certainly had an advantage of being positioned with the ordinance before this sort of influx of lighting. Now, they've had development, right, the development has changed.
How much turnover have they had in housing in the last ten decade? I think a lot.
Yeah, so it's, but it, you know, so there's certainly going to be differences, I don't know we're going to be an exact match, but it was, it was.
The other, the other question I had is with your, your graph, the radiance trends over time by location with offsets for visibility, and of course, you have Alapalms and Sullivan's very high. And then Edisto, Kiowa, Folly Beach is kind of the outlier a little bit, but those, those are, like, Edisto and Kiowa, what, this radiance graph, how much does it factor for the light that you get from the city of Charleston and surrounding areas, or we would get from Mount Pleasant?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, you can zone in to an area, so you can actually use a map and then zone into an island, a specific island, so there could be residual light from Charleston, but it would affect Folly as much as it would affect us, I would think, if not more.
But then you throw in Mount Pleasant also.
Right.
And Mount Pleasant's a hundred thousand people in the lives.
Yes, the data goes.
I'm just saying that, that, this graph, it seemed to me that it could be influenced somewhat by the ambient lighting or radiance or whatever from a surrounding large community.
Is the thing that we're supposed to take away from that graph, where the lines are, or the rate of increase? Because, I agree with Rusty, I think there's a lot of difference between those communities and density of housing, proximity to big cities, all those things, that would affect where they are. But if you're asking us to look at the increase, I can understand that.
I think it's both, in my opinion, it was both. It's the increase, you know, if we, if the rate we're going, we're doubling our light every twenty-five years, our light footprint, so that was a concern. But, yeah, I thought, you know, hey, there could be some benefit from some of the communities that have less light.[1772.75] from some of the communities that have less light. You know, this, this is not, I'm not a light expert, I'm not a light engineer, but the way that we did look at the data, it was, it's, it's layered over a map, and it's very specific to that area. And it's supposed to be the light that is radiating up towards the satellite because it's actually picking up that direct light. So you can see on the map, you have to see a visual, but you can see a bright light over Charleston, you see sort of darkness where the bay is, and then you see bright lights, you know, again, over the islands. And so there is separation where there's water, you don't see the light there, it doesn't bleed across the water lines. So it does have a little bit of a clean break. Now, I don't know, you know, again, I'm not a light engineer, is there ambient light that's still crossing even though you can see these dark lines where the water exists? You know, I'm not sure about that.
Jimmy.
I would.
There's a, a lot of us out here that consider ourselves very independent, autonomous people, and very suspicious of government overreach. What do you say to people, and there will be some critics that will say, looks like we're drifting towards HOA here outside the gate. What do you say to that?
I think.
The only thing that I, that I am totally in favor of is the second thing you mentioned about not shining a light in somebody's bedroom window, that's, of course, that's common sense. But, um, people are very suspicious about more and more regulation coming down.
Mm-hmm.
What, what do you say to counter that and say, well, the benefits outweigh the, the problems this is going to cause?
Right. Yeah, I think the same thing as John's question, you know, if this trend is continuing where we're headed, is that a good or a bad thing from a health standpoint, from a wildlife standpoint, from a natural beauty standpoint? I feel like we've lost our, our, kind of lost our way if we continue to light up. If this became like downtown Atlanta in terms of the lighting, we'd all agree that's bad, right? So we're trying to figure out a soft way to curb the growth rate without making it a significant undertaking for homeowners.
So what do you say, it's just more rules? That specifically is my question.
That it's just.
We're drifting towards HOA.
Yeah.
Which a lot of us out here are vehemently opposed to.
Yeah. I get it. I'm not sure what to say. I mean, sometimes things change with, if the health crisis is coming through this lighting thing, we, we probably should take it seriously.
Yeah, well, just something to chew on.
Okay.
Because it's coming.
Can we send it back to zoning to look at? Is that where it needs to go?
It's not really a zoning.
It would, it would have to. I mean, it would go to, it's, it is Title V, it's part of the zoning code, they would, they would have a recommendation on it. And that's part of just enacting a, part of a Title V section, so they would have a recommendation.
From, from my perspective, I, I support what you're suggesting. I mean, I, I like it. I understand what you're saying, Jimmy, and, and I agree with that as well. But as more people come here and more permanent residents come here, we're going to be faced with HOA-type issues. And that's just, that's just the truth of the matter, we are going to be. So I mean, I'd send it to zoning, let them chew on it, see what they, what they come up with, and get, get more eyes on it.
We're not adding more land.
Well, I understand that, but we're, but we're adding more permanent residents, and so when you do that, then there's more people and more interaction with people, and that creates the types of issues that we're now talking about.
Yeah, that's true.
Are you talking about sending it to planning, Douglas? Is that?
Yeah, it has to.
Planning commission?
Yes, because it's in the zoning, this, the turtle lighting section as it exists, that this is amending, is housed in the zoning code, any zoning code, as part of the amending, the zoning code process goes through the planning commission for recommendations. So just by virtue of it being in zoning, it will go to that.
That'll be next step.
Thank you.
Okay.
Todd? They don't necessarily need to, uh, if you will, gave it first, I can do it either direction. We could do it, I could either do it first, I think that's what I'm hearing, go to, go to planning first.
I think you should go to planning.
And if it goes.
Yeah. I think there's some good parts to this, but I'm not so sure if we can stomach the whole ordinance as it is right now as a community. It might, we might have to just do part of it, if at all.
Yeah. So I think, I think you're hearing planning commission, yeah?
Yeah.
Todd, thank you for committee's work.
Thank you.
Thanks for talking, Todd.
Next on Public Services, discussion of EV charging stations at 13th Avenue. I know this is coming out of the Public Services Committee.
Yeah, Scott and Katie have been part of these discussions, so, so I wish they were here to kind of talk through this. But this is coming through Dominion Energy. Dominion approached us. The issue that they brought to us is the fact that the EV charging stations are becoming more and more popular. They're seeing higher and higher demand each year with the electric, the sale of electric vehicles. And they have noticed a, kind of a hole in the grid for charging locations. The only space currently on the Isle of Palms is in Wild Dunes. So if they look at a map of all of the charging stations, there, there just aren't any around here. So they approached the Public Facilities Committee, asked them about interest in allowing, really allowing the construction of these somewhere outside of Wild Dunes to just kind of add some new ones. There's a little bit of revenue generated by these, not, I don't think enough to warrant.
A little bit in key.
Yeah, yeah, not, not really, uh, not really enough to warrant a decision one way or the other based on revenue. So I, I think it would really be more of a community service if you, if you chose to do, do so. The Public Facilities Committee talked about different locations, and there, there, there was some challenges. I guess the, the easiest one to do would be the big parking lots, but the wrinkle there was, there are times that you have to pay for a full day of, of parking, beach parking. So somebody who wants to charge for 20 minutes, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense for them to pay the full day rate for a beach, beachgoer. There are other sections, they talked about doing it at the marina, that was a viable option in the eyes of Dominion. But, but I think the space that they identified as probably being the best suited is on page 72 of your packet, and it's right across 13th Avenue from City Hall. So this is the, this is the parking lot, this is the edge of 13th Avenue right of way adjacent to the gravel parking lot. They could do, they could fit four spaces in there with one of them being an ADA space. So this is a, this is, I guess, a proposal to you all for your consideration, and I could have Dominion come speak to the group, or you could wait on.
Do you consider it a public-private enterprise collaboration? I mean, when you, when you said 13th Avenue, it said across from City Hall, I, I was thinking, right there.
It's right there.
No, I'm thinking the gas station.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Have you, have you thought about that?
I do not know. Certainly ask that question.
That would be something I think they would, you know, and get it out of IRMs. Let them, since there's no, no money, let them, let them do it.
And are they looking at spots on Sullivan's, Douglas, you know?
I do not know.
Yeah, just curious.
I haven't, I haven't heard that.
I noticed the, the photo they have of the charging stations at the waterfront park in Mount Pleasant. Of course, it's just a static photo, one moment in time, but they, nobody there, so I wonder how much you, you should still get.
Page 77, yeah.
Nobody there.
So they're also suggesting that.
Mount Pleasant Memorial Waterfront Park.
Well, that would be.
Page 75?
I think they felt like, yes, I think this is the one that they recommended.
I mean, again, you're paying at the marina to.
Yeah.
Charge potentially.
Yeah, I think this one was kind of more central, closer to the commercial district.
Okay.
You know, that's part of the, part of their kind of sales technique.
So the way it works is that we, we don't pay anything, they do. They install.
I think they can, I think they can finance it any which way, but yes, at, at the end of the day, we would not pay, we would, um, we would receive a little bit of money back.
Yeah.
So Douglas, is this coming?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Is this coming as a recommendation from the committee, or, you know?
Or just pushing it up to. Was that one that they just said, let's talk about it at council? Yeah, I don't think it was a, a recommendation.
I like Jimmy's idea of, you know, let, let the convenience store deal with it, or the marina. I mean, they're taught, they're suggesting we put it in the marina's parking lot, well, that's their parking lot that under the lease until 2045, let them deal with it.
Yeah.
If they think it's a good idea.
Well, if they're free, and it is, I mean, I think it's attracting the, a higher clientele, and it would make the island more accessible, maybe we don't want to encourage electric vehicles over here, but that's the way of the future. And I think in the future, there are private businesses are going to.
It's free installation, not free to use.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't cost us.
Correct.
Basically, we're giving up four parking spaces, and that's, that's what it costs us.
At the marina, we don't have, that's not our right. That's the marina.
I wouldn't do it at the marina.
Yeah, that's their parking lot.
And I think in the, the future, will they, these convenience stores and stuff will be installing them because those are captive customers.
It's got to be economically feasible for them, or they won't do it, basically.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the price of that dirt over there with that convenience store is expensive, every inch of it, inside and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be, again, from my standpoint, to kind of distill it down, I think it would be seen as a community service to, to, you know, provide a service to the community, provide those with electric vehicles with a place to charge them, visitors. The other carrot that they, that they talk about is you're drawing in a captive audience. They come here, they need to kill 30 minutes an hour, they're going to go to your restaurants, they're going to, um, visit your, visit your downtown area instead of go, going somewhere else. So not a, not a, a huge moneymaker. I think that they're probably, I'm doubting there is a, there's a great commercial model to make money, because otherwise I think they'd be all over the place. So clearly not a moneymaker. I'm doubting the Circle K would have any interest.
When, when they're, the number of electric vehicles increases, they'll be in shopping centers and, and other places, communities downtowns and whatnot.
Right.
We'll have, we'll start putting them in, but we want to do it now.
It'd be nice to have a golf cart charging station, Douglas, if you're looking at it.
Donnie, does Donnie have something to say about it?
Donnie.
Mayor, and Douglas is probably going to fall out of his chair, coming from deep.
I know.
But just today, uh, there was a illegally plugged in cord to, on the same circuit as the cameras. PPD called us, we looked at the cameras, and it all went down because it was illegally charged, so.
What location?
Uh, in the same circuit, the cameras at the front beach.
Oh, at the front beach.
So, I must say, they're coming. They have to do something.
They're here.
Mayor? Well, I'm so wondering, can we send it back to committee to look at, potentially a private?
I think that would just be a no. I mean, I think, I think if you were to say the city is not, I mean, I think they know that private is not. I think they're pursuing that as they.
So it's just as a community.
You can't ask them?
Just as a community service.
I could ask.
We can, I, I think we should keep options open and ask them to, somebody might think twice. I wouldn't shut the door on it.
Okay. Can I ask that question?
Yeah, and then you see, I mean, if the committee wants to make a recommendation for council consideration, I mean, I think that's the path, as opposed to just kicking up for a discussion.
Okay.
Next on Personnel, discussion of wage study update. Douglas or Janice?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give this, and this, this came through the Administration Committee as well. This is, this is a little bit of a, a deviation from the norm. As you will recall, in our kind of long-range planning, we had, we, at some point, two years ago now, two and a half years ago, we had a wage study done. The thought process at this last budget process was to not put a wage study in this year's budget, wait till next year. So this year's budget includes a 5% adjustment for employees. We have noticed and it's been brought to our attention that we are, as time goes on from that wage study, we're deviating farther and farther from our competition and what our neighbors are willing to pay, particularly in, we believe particularly in the public safety realm. So in having these discussions about your upcoming budget, we are, we are proposing and hoping that you will, will authorize a, an interim study. So this would be going back to the firm that did the last study and asking them to update those numbers. So it wouldn't be a full-blown wage and compensation study. This would be taking our old competitors, our, our old positions, which have, which are largely the same, and updating the numbers for the, for those positions, and then providing a document for this council that would be finished in time for you all to consider that during your upcoming budget process. So in years previous, we have had the results of this wage and compensation study come out in the middle of your budget year. That has resulted in, if you, if you wanted to make an adjustment, that's an unbudgeted expense. So this would get you a little bit ahead of that and, and have that data back to you in time to consider through the budgeting process. The cost to do that is 16,500, I think. 16,500. And it would be the same firm, we've, we've reached out to them. So that would be the request of council.
And the recommendation from the Admin Committee is to, I mean, is to do that, is to move forward.
So the 165s unbudgeted, whatever the results would be, would be budgeted for the next fiscal year.
That's correct.
But we'd be doing it in advance so that we'd have time to plan for that.
That's correct. Yeah, you would have the results by January to then kind of have that through your next budgeting cycle in place for a July 1 kind of effective date of that future.
That last wage study they did, Evergreen?
Yes, yeah, we would, it was Evergreen.
Was it two years ago, three years ago?
Now, it's, yes, two and a half years.
Yeah.
And that was part, yeah, that was part of the suggestion. I think they kind of knew, the longer you wait, the farther apart you're going to get. So two years was recommended, and we've kind of pushed that a bit. So we proposed to do it now.
Can you do that without our approval, the amount of money, or is it just because it's unbudgeted?
Um, it is unbudgeted, so I could not.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll, we'll take this up at council. Thank you. Next item, other items for discussion, discussion of USTA grant to upgrade tennis court. Carrie?
Carrie, you want to give us a quick? This has the effect of kind of locking in the use of our tennis courts in exchange for.
Yeah, so currently, our tennis courts are a multipurpose tennis pickleball court. We added those lines a few years, a few years ago before we had the dedicated pickleball courts. This year is the year to reconstruct the tennis courts. There is a grant through US Tennis that would dedicate these courts as tennis courts only. So I wanted to bring that to the facilities and get a recommendation on how to proceed. Since they are currently multipurpose, accepting this grant would make them dedicated tennis only.
And how much is the grant, Carrie?
Up to 20,000 per court.
How much does it work? How much will, how much is it worth? How much will it take to do this?
What's that budget? Okay, my budget number.
So, the, our budgeted cost is, should cover the project.
Right.
What is that?
Um--
I think it's $150.
Yeah.
Do you remember the research? I, I have $150 in my mind.
Yeah, I think you are.
The research. Let's say it's $150.
I think there is $150, and then there's some, I think the total with the fencing is $220. I think, I think they're broken up into two projects.
And how many courts do we--
We have two courts. And so, that wouldn't change, we're not changing the footprint. What we would be changing is just the play that happens on those courts.
Okay, but each court would be $75,000, and you're talking about a $20,000 grant--
Reimbursement, grant, grant per course, per court.
If you did the course, could you, what prevents you from coming back later and putting pickleball on?
So, obviously, that is a common question that they receive. We lose our US membership, and so, we would lose any future funding for any programming or future projects.
Tennis, please.
Pickleball people are pretty, are pretty aggressive at times.
So--
Would you see pushback from the pickleball group?
I, this is going to be one of those things that we're, we're not going to make either one happy with either decision that we make. So, but what came out of the facilities and what we can do is, and I went back to them, is to dedicate one tennis court, which we would use the grant for, and the other one would continue to be multipurpose. And I did ask and make sure that even though it's a shared space, that that would work. And the grant committee said, yes, that would work. And so, the facilities, what came out of that is to go that route.
And that's what you recommend?
I would work with that, yes. I mean, in a, in a, in a, in a great world, I would say dedicated spaces are easier to maintain. You would have two tennis, two basketball, two pickleball. Everything seems fair. We know we don't live in a fair world, and, you know, so--
So, which, which is more popular now?
Hang on, Jimmy.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, the pickleball courts were like $225, and 25 of it, or $220,000, 25 of it came out of general fund, 200,000 of it came out of tourism funds, tourism funds. So, accommodation tax, and off-town tax and all that paid for that, for those pickleball courts. And most of our people that come stay here don't even know we have them. Is that the same ratio, to the best of your knowledge, as far as this upgrade to the tennis courts? I believe that it is.
There is funding from all of it, from accommodations.
There's $190,000 worth of it for reconstructing two tennis courts. It looks like two-thirds of it is coming from tourism, and 60 is coming from the--
Rec building.
Rec building fund.
Yeah.
And that's funded to cover projects.
That is correct.
Yeah. So, two, two-thirds of it's tourism. It's pretty good.
Ashley?
I would recommend that we do--
Can you get a mic?
All right. The, the single-use, I mean, a little biased as a tennis player, but I've played pickleball also, but, you know, the pickleball court or nets damaged the courts, and we're going to spend this money to fix and repair the courts, and they're going to put the nets back up even--
And that is one of the reasons that USTA would agree exactly with what Ashley said, that the pickleball, the courts, and will damage the courts too, which is one of the reasons they dedicate.
Do we have any plans in the future to build more pickleball courts? I feel like that was talked about at some point, but, well, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, when you look at, when we built our pickleball courts, you know, you've had all these private entities come up, Pickleball Kingdom, Crush Yard, all these other places. I mean, there's a lot more opportunity for people to play, and Carrie and I, we've had this conversation, I mean, there are, a lot of times, there is nobody on our pickleball courts. So, I don't think we're getting, I don't think there's an issue of conflicting usage, personally, but I would, I would dedicate them if it was me.
That was, that's what I was going to ask, is what's the usage of the courts now?
They're both pretty popular, and we have a pretty robust youth tennis program and adult clinics, and I would say, and, and I don't play tennis, so, tennis player might back me up here, but I do know, and Katie even said, those lines, the pickleball lines, when you're playing tennis or learning how to play tennis are very distracting. It makes it a little bit more difficult, especially when you're teaching youth how to play with the lines, of what lines are which and which ones you're supposed to play off of. So, we, but we do have, we have a very robust tennis youth and adult program.
And the pickleball is not as robust? Is that what you're saying?
We have, we do have pickleball lessons as well, but they don't have to share a facility, the tennis has to share the facility. So, the pickleball lessons happen on the pickleball courts, they're dedicated, so there's not the extra lines that they need to. But we do have a pickleball program as well with lessons.
Okay. I mean, I know--
Yes.
Pickleball is on the rise, and I didn't know whether tennis was on the decline or not.
I, I don't think it is.
Okay. It's just--
Okay.
I'd go for the grant and dedicate them both personally. I mean, there's plenty of options for people to play, in my opinion, in other places, in addition to our rec center.
Fixing something, just dammit it again.
Pickle and tennis.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that--
I'm hearing dedicate, try for the full grant and dedicate--
All right. We didn't vote, but I'm feeling--
You see, you feel the head nods.
I'm feeling like--
That's where to go.
Not by this council.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you, Carrie. Last item, legislative report, Douglas, I know you mentioned earlier you met with Thorn Run, our federal lobbyist, you want to give an update?
Yeah, I would just, they, they indicated a, potentially an ability to help with our grant extension. The other, you know, they, they've had, we have given them all of our master plans, the drainage master plan, the sewer master plan, the sea level rise adaptation plan. They have, they have kind of been looking at that and trying to turn, tie different programs to each of those major undertakings. They have, they are, we think, reporting back to us that they see a path forward in what they called a Section 219 Water Resources Development Act authorization. And in short, what that would be is they would bundle up, and, and they felt like there was a connection really between all of our, all of our, all of our issues are related to water, stormwater, erosion from tidal water, bundle those into one massive project, and then get that massive project authorized through the federal government as a 219 infrastructure project. Once it's authorized, there's, and this is, the, the process to become authorized is very much like the federal beach where it's a $3 million study, the city would have to match that $3 million with, with half of the funds. And then, you're kind of in this, you're, you're in a process to be studied, then to be considered, and then eventually, and they, they kind of put a two- to three-year horizon on this authorization coming to fruition. But, but they indicated if you're successful in getting that authorization, your project, if, so if you, if you, for example, if you lumped our drainage master plan, which has a $50 million price tag on it, our sewer master plan, which has a $50 million price tag on it, and our long-term beach work that has kind of a $50 million price tag on it over time, you get that full $150 million authorized as a project. You then, there is a 75 federal, 25% local match, and you go through your legislation each year for whatever match you can stomach. So, if you, if you can come up with $2.5 million, they, they would come up, if they could allocate the $7.5 million, you could then get a $10 million project authorized under that program and, and begin chipping away at it. This is the way the city of Charleston is doing a lion's share of their drainage work and, and their resilience work at the high battery. Thorn Run is their, is, is also their consultant and their lobbyist, so it's a very similar path to the one that the city of Charleston's going down. So, there, we're going to be in discussions with them about that, but kind of in, in a long-term, you know, it's, it's obviously a very long-term process, but at the end of the day, it would have us paying 25% for kind of all of those processes through the years, but we, but we could only do what we have the bandwidth to fund at, at a 25% match, and it has to get allocated, each project each year has to get allocated in the US budget.
Is there any time limit to how long we have to come up with, to meet that $150 million?
No.
Approval?
No, it could--
It's pretty much forever, or almost forever?
Yeah. It's a very long-range, long-term--
I mean, this is a strategy going forward, very--
Yeah, this is a very long--
Have you talked to our delegates yet about that?
Uh, they have not. No, they're, they're meeting with, they met with us, I think that was late last week. They're meeting with the Water and Sewer Commission. They're kind of formulating the strategy, but they wanted to just talk through that strategy before they go--
This is very good news.
Yeah.
It's a possibility.
Yeah, as long as we don't have to come up with $40 million--
Full numbers.
Right, right in the, in the beginning, yeah.
Excellent.
You can--
Yeah, that's all I have to report on that.
Thank you, Douglas. Next item is update on South Carolina lobbyist work, discussion of beach funding and existing and future South Carolina budget, as well as budget surplus. So, a couple of different buckets of money that are out there, and we've talked about some of this. So, PRT Parks Recreation and Tourism has a whopping million and a half in their budget for this year that will go through an application process that starts this fall, is all via our state lobbyists. So, that'll happen this fall. The fund, once you get approved for that, the funding doesn't happen until February.
And what's it for, what kind of project?
Beach. All this is beach-related.
Oh, okay.
But that's a whole South Carolina coast, isn't it?
Yeah, million and a half. So, we'll go after whatever we can and see what we get. PRT is also meeting later this month to put in the next request for the governor's budget, and they're going to hopefully be shooting somewhere between a 10 and 20 million dollar number instead of a million and a half, so--
Great.
Good news.
Good news.
I mean, that's what they're going to ask for, whether they get it or not.